Yeah, great and wonderful dear friends, please, while we wait for the Al Udo Town Hall meetings, please take a look at this video. Take a look at this video on the screen and warn your people, if you are a politician, if your hands are in the things that is happening, the insecurity that is happening in Ibo land, warn your people, warn your politicians brothers and sisters, warn your politician, father and mother, that all the evils they have committed in Ibo land work eventually catch up with them. Now, this one has been cut. The person you see here is a politician. I want you to watch, watch and send this video to all of them politicians, that they are not invisible, that they can catch them anytime, any day. Please, let's watch the video. What I share is you to continue playing until Al Udo Town Hall starts. I think they supposed to start in some, in a few minutes time now. They saying, okay, let's watch. Thank you.
Uh, ahha o wangele, wenyabe. Ahamo o ngosi obu, o ye ihithe iho bokiwe. Mbo o gap gara ga ebbe 28 years ago, achre mokiwe deka lokha government chairman. Abelinhoa kamwe 2020, before 2020 nihoa of, of, that's five years ago. Ndola e ma ndiako, ewe re peace. So much so na, ndifulani, da zena bata na ebbe iho be, iho benine, na achana ma, ne re po momo e, ne me bishe ya korona ubi. Ma me pisigawae achonama, ne me bishe ya kro nubi. Ndi ESN, na Biafra liberation nami, wure bata na ebbe iho be na ako. Habri na community school nono lae ebbe sage isi iho be na aga ako. Bahabieba, ndi ESN, na Biafra liberation nami, ha wure more opportunity choondi, ndifulani, ne me bishe ndola e, eh, ha ako. Ne re po momo e, ha wure chopoga. Bahachopogara. Before we know it, 2020, bahachopogara, biazi ma government, biazi sa formo group, ahha po ibubago. The government formo that group, group e ye ye hendyeze na ndi government. Bahabieba po bata, na bata ibubago. Ibu bagoa gara ga poronde black and black, dote na nke atanki i, nona isi iho be na aga okroma uhihe gawako. Ma e onko wo eze polubu agonze, ma eze achon genesis, ma eze ndiozo, makana ndi abomo na oso. Ha wure po bata, ana ndi, ana maybe PJ, ndi PJ, ewe re na iho be mbanha, ewe re PJ ano, niho be. Ma mo, I can't remember, nditigam, ah, ndi nonbanha, beti. Ewe re PJ ano ni, ana ndi eze, ana government wure me meeting, wure na bata ndi black and black, we abuze buja na ibubago. Metahana bata ndi black and black nona, abilanke atanki i, okroma si iho be na aga ako. Kambanha na bata ra ndia, ewo ba ra zewo, no kiwe. Particularly, ndi iho be, ana hemekozinguithi ndiako, ma na church, oh fu church, ana ekobi. Ana hemekoa ma he church, ma omololo, ma omowidu, ma, ma ebaboofu, okanu neti, even maro ha. So, ana ya, ana, ana ne wezi insugu nobode, nobode, ana hemekota zee. Ana ne ewo ezi bo baara. Bi kana me diho hera, akwa kanpo wa hamazo, ngosi obu. Na yo, ndi nonochiti wellele, atika ndi nonochiti kambo, ndi nonochiti iho be. Ma ndi ke nona government, ma ndi ke nona PJ, ma ndi chief, ndi akadi of fundingze, lile nona iho be. Owo no nocho, owo nuweke wo ngosi obu, Thiburu okiwe lokha government area alive, within four days. Nu ga po fuga ndi black and black, ah, nonan pekela no, oye ana kongo. Nu ga po fuga ha, ka ndi iho be na ndi ako, no momo na ha, bo momo lolo, ma abofu, ka walele ke ne hemekota utase, hemekota before, ke wure ewu do. Akwa no na aga ga po fuga ha, in four days, I will not be alive. And, muna po fa, oh, oka shonna nembia, nona hene. Ndi odo iwa, ndi gabakulkuwela hene ozon, adeka oku, hene galutuunseguwa, ga ga kahangezwe wure ga wa. Ayo kwa me adeka ayo. Ngosi obu ahm, akwa wa hamazo. Umua aumuni, beti hene na yo uni, uni me, me ye, wure ewu do na okiwe, akwa emne oto lumha, buko. Wure koma asu iwo, yo ye buko do, buko ne. Oye emne. Hene emne ali komeku, uni me ye, bo lewa balea no. Kwe wure na ngaloloolo, aso ye bina, na wohanya wana, unanwa.
Tamo, vicom, ndi iho be. Ona hunah, ona mano nyao, ona mano nyao, mua wa mukue ra mu, ngafwa Biafra Betro nami, ana ne zo ya, ana ne me kidnapper. Eh, bato, o bi mbawa, eh, tangi, eh? La wa nuweke, ona ma ha ba angote wenyapu intisha, eh? Omuno like re, omuno like wa nuweke, omuno honya nanya, eh? Ndi white house ha, ndi blacka nuweze sala white house, eh? Munawa, na po koho, from night to, emne nuwe, four days ya, four days, from night to Tuesday, akwa yemeke four days. Nu na po punji blacka black eh, eh, wa nuweke eh, uta uni ga tia achon, andwa ga, andwa yo ozon, de supe eh, owo onanya, owo nanya. Aba me gu na ahm, bea kameydi u, e u na iwa. Hamga uno, wa nuweke, omuno no, no like re, omuno no like re, ebemda ge wote, ebemda muwete wo, o nimu. Hmm? Obe, o nimu, kameyti re, eh? Omo kono, ni mu, omo nyanyana, oba ga dharaya echi. Eh? Ona so, uh, akuna, emacha la meeting, bakaka, la no, utindi naju, eh, naju latuari, eh? De ibubago lile, ga ga pojuna, eh, eh, janto, uga bato bi, eh? Nwe, okiwe, number one, okiwe. Ona ga ge nyeha pojuna, uga no, o no eh? O no no kiwe? O no no kiwe, oda du no to. Eh, o, oda, oda babawa la men, eh? Oda deha yena, eh, wa nuweke, munaku punjiya. He, eh, na, 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 ni du no naka, omo oze ni du no naka. Omuno like wa nuweke, hmm? Ndi blacka blacka nona, nena white house o, ma na po, four nights you four days, eh? Adme buye, buko nozo, hmm? Aga sao ni ku, hara nyanta, dihono, ni lile. Eh, ekucha la ma, me, abe amike lo du.
Uh, ahha o wangele, wenyabe. Ahamo o ngosi obu, o ye ihithe iho bokiwe. Mbo o gap gara ga ebbe 28 years ago, achre mokiwe deka lokha government chairman. Abelinhoa kamwe 2020, before 2020 nihoa of, of, that's five years ago. Ndola e ma ndiako, ewe re peace. So much so na, ndifulani, da zena bata na ebbe iho be, iho benine, na achana ma, ne re po momo e, ne me bishe ya korona ubi. Ma me pisigawae achonama, ne me bishe ya kro nubi. Ndi ESN, na Biafra liberation nami, wure bata na ebbe iho be na ako. Habri na community school nono lae ebbe sage isi iho be na aga ako. Bahabieba, ndi ESN, na Biafra liberation nami, ha wure more opportunity choondi, ndifulani, ne me bishe ndola e, eh, ha ako. Ne re po momo e, ha wure chopoga. Bahachopogara. Before we know it, 2020, bahachopogara, biazi ma government, biazi sa formo group, ahha po ibubago. The government formo that group, group e ye ye hendyeze na ndi government. Bahabieba po bata, na bata ibubago. Ibu bagoa gara ga poronde black and black, dote na nke atanki i, nona isi iho be na aga okroma uhihe gawako. Ma e onko wo eze polubu agonze.
However, as tensions escalated and conflict became inevitable in America. The Revolutionary War ultimately culminated in independence, illustrating how violent struggle can serve as a catalyst for self-determination. The willingness to engage in welfare-governed support and unified separate colonial factions leading to the successful establishment of a new nation that all of you are today and I am having a town hall meeting with you in the United States. Let us look into the Haitians. The Haitian Revolution 1791 to 1804. The Haitian Revolution is a stark example of how violent resistance can lead to independence. Enslaved Africans, Saint Dominique rose up against their French colonial masters in a brutal and protected conflict. While other colonies were pursuing gradual reform, Haiti revolutionary leaders sought a two-sand.
Oso, ha wure po bata, ana ndi, ana maybe PJ, ndi PJ, ewe re na iho be mbanha, ewe re PJ ano. Ndi eze, ana government wure me meeting.
The Algeria War of Independence from 1954 to 1962. In Algeria, the struggle for independence from French colonial rule was marked by extreme violence. The National Liberation Front employed guerrilla warfare and terrorist tactics against French, against French forces. Despite the significant international condemnation and a harsh reprisal, the NLF Violence Campaign was instrumental, rallying nationalist sentiment and eventually led to Algeria gaining independence in 1962. The intensity of the conflict highlighted the frustration of colonized people and ultimately prompted a reevaluation of the colonial policies by the French government. When the oppressors resort to violence, they will also be confronted with more violence to have a more proactive and more decisive outcome. The Irish War of Independence from 1919 to 1921, following centuries of British rule, December 1880, the Irish struggle for independence saw both peaceful and violent tactics. While figures like Daniel O'Connell advocated for no means or no violence means, the Irish Republican Army employed armed rebellion as a primary strategy. The conflict escalated with ambushes and retaliatory violence, ultimately leading to the Anglo-Irish Treaty and the establishment of the Irish Free State in 1922. The combination of violent and political pressure was crucial in achieving a concession from the British government. At this juncture, ask those idiots who call themselves Biafra agitators, why are they interfering in the self-defense that they could not provide for Biafra people for decade they are carrying flag all over the world? My fellow Biafrans in the United States, why these few examples I just gave to you today illustrate the effectiveness of violent agitation? It is also very essential to consider the contest in which these struggles occurred. Factors such as colonial oppression, today we have what are called the Fulani apartheid regime in Nigeria, where the expansionists continue to follow the legacy of the Usman Danfoudou and I have promised them I have come here to end the legacy of Usman Danfoudou and the end of the legacy of Usman Danfoudou will start on December 2nd. These factors such as colonial oppression, social injustice and lack of responsive governance often participated the turn to violence. In many cases, peaceful protests had been met with repression, leaving groups with few alternative. That particular one, Biafra, has witnessed for decade. Today, Biafra government, we are doing the talking. We are not only talking about doing it. The relationship between violent agitation and independence is complex sometimes and multi-faced. And that's exactly why we adopted what I call the multi-dimensional approach. Anywhere you come, we are there. If you come with peace, we give peace to you. If you come with violence, we give violence to you. If you come with diplomacy, we give diplomacy to you. If you come with political, political approach, we give political approach to you. If you say it's a political solution, we give political solution to you. Why peaceful protest movement? Biafra has moved on from peaceful to a defensive with arms. Asis, the violent resistance have sometimes proven more effective in achieving tangible outcomes. The example of the American Revolution, Haitian Revolution, Algeria War of Independence and the Irish War of Independence, which and very soon Biafra will join among the history that has been made using a very strong armed resistance against a terrorist state like Nigeria. I want you to understand that peaceful efforts are stifled when a terrorist is in charge of government or when the authoritarian motive of the government is against the will of the people. Then the peaceful effort will always be stifled. The drug freedom can lead group to resort to armed struggle. Ah, ever be different. Ultimately, the choice of tactics is shaped by the mirrored factors and each movement must navigate its own path towards self-determination. Today, as a government of Biafra, I am telling you Biafra people that we as a government, we are navigating our path toward our freedom and self-determination. Those Nigeria-ended distractors should understand that our arms are getting stronger every day and we are getting more sophisticated. We will never drop this arm until the flag of Biafra is hoisted without any body interfering and until the recognition of Biafra as an independent state, the arms will continue to get more sophisticated. Thank you very much. Your support is needed as always and get ready to have, to be part of the history in Finland.
Thank you.
Land of the rising sun, we love and cherish. We love and hold, land of our brave heroes. We must defend our life, all we shall cherish. We shall protect our hearts from all the force. But in the prize is that for all we hold dear. Then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a true consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our sword and pen. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our freedom. Thou where we stand, that we can hold in thy free shall always be our blood of liberty. We shall imagine triumph and triumph is our deal. And through the crucible on stable pass. When we are boys, thou wounds of battle to live. We shall remember those who guide us past. Then shall our throne, let fill the glorious song of victory, with God almighty. Oh God, protect us from the ill people. Guide all our movements, lest we go astray. Give us the strength to heal the human's soul. To give and not to come the costly chain. Let those who rule to suffer with resoluteness. To make this kind of land of righteousness.
Land of the rising sun, we love and cherish. We have anguish for our enemies, all hail me your fraud. God bless your fraud. In him we trust, shall it sing it. All hail your fraud. God bless your fraud. The heavy march triumphant throng all our foes. Through the crucible on stable pass. Tell the valley of joyous. Let it sing it. All hail your fraud. Oh hail me your fraud. We shall always remember all that cherished in the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be won, oh day. Say them always, all hail your fraud. All hail your fraud. No more storms shines everywhere. We pray humility. A boy that protect us all. All hail your fraud. Shielding us from danger. Unish my love, my heart. All hail your fraud.
In the silence of the following lyrics of Biafra, the time starts now.
Namak, are you not yet gehosted?
No, not yet.
Okay.
That's correct.
Namak, are you not yet gehosted?
One with it. Once again, I welcome you all to Aludo. And we are going to fasten the process, like I said, a bit. So that we end up also in time. The next, we are going to invite the Aludo S A. Honorable Emeka Obai to welcome his guest and deliver to us his welcome address. Honorable sir, please, the ball is on your court.
Yeah, honorable, okay. Thank you and good evening. Excellency. A P M. Marty Okechukwu Kere. Honorable Information Minister. Parawa. All other ministers of the region government. Every other minister. Government in homeland, the federal government in homeland. Aludo citizens, home, homeland and diaspora. And all friends and well wishers of Aludo here present. Well, from all of you, thank you for honoring us once again. It's our eighth in the series of twenty twenty five. Aludo Town Hall Meeting. The A P M. We're already late, we're not going to embark on a long speech. It's in English. It is very obvious. That our need for freedom is unchangeable. It is a need, it's not a want. You can see the intensity of how the Toko Haram onslaught is coming. You can see what the terrorizing army uniform, our police uniform are doing in our land. Welcome witness. intensified economic transformation of our people. All this, you know, we have no option, we have no alternative. Or they continue being what we are being to achieve freedom at last. We must not deceive ourselves by turning a blind eye. On what our honorable A P M. did recently. His exploits at the Washington D C is yielding fruit. His diplomatic onslaught against the zoo government is being observed even by the enemies. He said, the recent announcement he made regarding. The discussion about Biafra at the White House is a big phenomenon. My honorable A P M., I say kudos to you. I can't thank you enough for what you are doing. In the eye of the storm, you start and you continue to push. I with you. We will continue to do with you. Or you continue to do more. Even when you don't hear our noise, when you don't hear our voice. Have it somewhere in your heart to know that we are solidly following you. And this effort of supporting you is exactly what is bringing us here today again. Raise as much as we can, raise on the support. For the diplomatic onslaughts and the liberation of our homeland. This is why we are here, is the major reason we are here. I urge everybody here, please assist, we need a gentleman. Need a J. And we need resources, if you have laptops, we need. So that they will be able to manage our life, able to do what we are doing. The homeland need from, region need from. We appeal to you to make generously and please ensure. A redemption is made. The past recent months, the last two months, we have witnessed a downward trend. The redemption of pledges made during our town hall meeting. I may not be able to pin down to what the reason is. In the month of June, we were able to collect only sixty five percent. Of all the total pledges made. The month of July, only collected thirty seven percent. Whatever is leading to this downward trend, drugs and Chuku DiCaprio should help us stop that trend. That trend is what we, so. As we gather again tonight, to raise funds. To support our A P M. To support our men on the ground in the homeland. They are doing a wonderful job. I urge everybody. To donate, donate a J, send to us, donate a M. Of them are very important. Like I said, I am not going to embark on any long speech. At this point, I want to end it up and I say. As Aludo is eating at the New York Festival. I urge you to join us in the New York Festival that is going around everywhere in Aludo. Thank you, and Chuku DiCaprio, I bless you. Chuku DiCaprio, my dear friend. See, 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 there were.
There were. Thank you, S A. You're welcome, that is highly noble from you. And we appreciate your services to these noble states. And pray that you work, I will continue to guide, fortify you in all your endeavors. So, my lovely people of Biafra. And today, actually, Aludo have intended to surprise you all with one new link activity. But as it may, after the intricacies of this month, we rather say, no, it is not a. A right this particular time. And the event is somehow postponed. Because as the authors rightly resolved. We are in moment in a very grievous mood or situation. So there's no point in this time for merriment, we are at war. And the only thing we are out for is to engage our enemies and get results. So that which was originally scheduled for today will come up next. It remains a nucleus, it remains a. It's just a piece of the iceberg. Keep expecting what will come up next, you know, next town hall meeting. And I would also like to use this opportunity, this brief moment to recognize. Some of us in Aludo Petroids. Who are solely responsible for this events. Aludo Town Hall Meeting is being organized by the Petroids of Aludo. So I want to recognize each and every one of them briefly, so that you may not be wondering. Who are actually behind these things that you see. And Aludo Petroids, they are solely advisory to the state of Aludo. They have nothing in the executive body, their positions, our duties is just to advise the Aludo. And the federal government, the executives. And I'm proud to announce that they are doing it very well, as expected. So the Aludo Petroids is being cheered by my humble self, Mazie Oke Owo. We have as members. Mazie Paul. Omubiko. Mazie Isaac. Wada Peschance. Ochuku. Mazie Emelike, Emelike. Of course, the honorable S A, Mazie Emeka Obai. Mazie Agowu. Wada, Wachuku. Mazie Namak. Mazie Ugoge. Anuke. And Wada Sachi Iketsuku. This honorable Mazies and the Wadas made of the Aludo Petroids. So please, I will also, in recognizing them, I want everyone of us to appreciate them. They are. Exactly what our onion promise us is going to send angels, what it angels to have in piloting these affairs. So thank you all for all your services. But we move on. So honorable S A, please, without wasting much time. I know that these honorable individuals have been recognized and appreciated by every Aludran, the Aludo people. And we still. Need more hands, please, if you are an Aluda, please always identify yourself, come out, be a part of us. Your ideas and impuse is always needed and will be helpful. So S A, please, the ball is again to your court. Can you please present or call somebody to present the color note for Biafrans?
Thank you, great honor. As usual, it's time to offer. Chuku DiCaprio and our ancestors, full of notes in the wine life. I call on our honorable Mazie Namak. Come and call the elders out, call them out to join us. Honorable Namak, can you take over the mic and break color notes for us? Thank you.
Thank you very much, my wonderful S A. I hope I'm coming out.
Yes.
Very well, very well.
The network want to mess me up, but I have prepared for him.
Yeah.
Yes, I have prepared for him. You want to mess me up, I want to thank my wonderful people. For honoring our invitation this evening. To come here, to stay with us in our town hall meeting. I want to welcome everybody. It's a time to, for the color notes. As I urge, I think I know, I think I know, okay. So as our custom and our manner is, we use our dialect and break the color notes. Chuku DiCaprio. Papa Sidilo. Okay, 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 okay. I'll be one year, a busa potro. I am a little leggy, a little bit of a, about a little bit, no, oh, what, I want to do a reality to us. I am a warrior. I saw you, we both saw you, we saw you, we saw you. I know, I see, he had a woman, we have a, but I know you. Papa Sidilo, I know you. Now you're, oh, you're my. Now you're the man, the column bar. Is a matter. I'll be a poacher, I know you. Not you, okay. Not you, okay. And I shook, no, Fabreba. Yeah, for now, you know. No, go, go, go. Oh, go, from, go, yeah, for now, you know. Never, you come, oh, oh, what's that, oh, this. Oh, we, oh, we, 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 yeah, for now, you know. Oh, to, to, is a man, yeah, for now, you know. About shoot, to, to, yeah, for now, you know. Oh, food, to, to, yeah, for now, you know. Who know, she went there, and dog, one, in the honey. On the sheer, we, we, but those. Much, we're prophet, uh, brigade, the gentle, general, gentle. Who look, which, yeah, what? Even a more, but. It's here, nearly, if anyone, I, when I don't, who are, who are. When I donate our fighters, our B D F, our resistance fighters, our marine fighters, all the people that are on ground, all the men on ground. Take them, who look, which, yeah, what? Even a more, but, yeah, 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 yeah. I need to get, get, I need to get. I see, which, yeah, I, I don't know, no. Look, I, no, go. Oh, chair. You want, yeah, by, you want, you know. Oh, give, they said to be so cheap. Oh, give, we, so cheap. And the man, I can, I, we, so cheap, yeah, bah, oh, oh, look. Oh, what, keep, yeah, bah, oh, oh, look. I don't go, and I, chop, ah, the one. I think, I, 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 Google, I, I send, I, I, I. I, 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 you're a boss, you're a boss.
Alright, uh I have to announce today. Uh you know what Aludo is doing is not for us, it's not for Aludo. We are only representing the government, Brigi. So everything uh Aludo uh is doing or have been doing uh must be reported back to uh the authorities. So for uh that note, we will want everybody who is making a pledge or whom had a pledge to please our ifna market cost uh on you to kindly leave uh uh where you are, where you are domicile or your admin or rep. Uh just so that we know who to uh meet or discuss with uh after all. Because uh Aludo uh have to uh give account of all this uh uh all these uh pledges. If they fail, that means they would be liable, they have to pay somehow. So I think uh uh it will be notable if you if you are asked to please uh courageously tell us who your reps uh country where you are and just your reps. So that we know how to uh reach uh reach uh at you afterwards. And there was one number.
On in December, those the lots uh when you pay who you who you will handle by your receipt. So that we can uh call on that person to
Yes. So uh okay, uh um no, so uh are you still speaking or is uh?
Uh like, okay, since I just heard the information you give now, this is my receipts now. Uh where should I uh 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 send the receipts?
Okay, you can send it to me.
Okay, sir.
Have you, have you, have you paid?
Ah?
Have you already paid?
No, 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 it should be muted, it should be muted.
Those in the aspect, you can just send the receipt directly to me. Or if you are in the payment uh uh a payment platform, if you just press it here and which uh Aludo needs, we'll also get it.
Okay, thank you.
Let's. Yeah, yeah, thank you. So um uh Kevin. Uh Kevin, unmute yourself.
There were no, there were no, there were no, there were no.
There were.
Yeah, my greetings to all behalf France. So on behalf of Azala State, we are taking color note with the sum of thirty thousand AJ. We will send the receipt to our minister, Mazha Parawa. There were.
Okay, uh thank you. Okay, okay, just, just, just uh write underneath Aludo so that he will know where it it goes, please.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know, I know.
Thank you very much, thank you. Uh great. Great, unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh good afternoon. Good evening, independia time zone. Am I coming out clear?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I greet uh everybody in this town hall meeting and our APM and uh miss of information other protocols observed. Speaking to you here is Minister of uh Interior in the homeland. We're so much happy to be in the mission for Aludo in this town hall meeting and uh on behalf of uh my executive, we are taking the color note in the sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you.
May they perform.
Yeah, alright, uh good evening everyone.
Uh good evening.
Yeah, um I want to thank our uh APM. Uh special welcome to Aludo State Town Hall Meeting. Uh Edi Komogera and Ekene, the administrator, my comrade, Aludo State. My brother, you you are really trying, it's not easy. Yeah, uh and that is the system of a consistency person on a freedom fighting. Thank you so much. They can acquire all the Aludo season, uh most especially those that believe were done here my comrade Uku uh for this very battle. Thank you so much. And without taking our time, on behalf of my state, Alanso State, uh we are taking the cola with the sum of uh twenty thousand AJ. Yeah, I already met through the home minister of finance.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much, yeah.
God bless you, God bless you.
Thank you.
We they, we they see, we they hear, and I'm just see you can, no, I know.
They were.
No, they, no, they can, no, they can.
Thank you.
Uh more, more mobile, more mobile.
Yeah, there one more, there one more. Uh uh greetings uh my APM and uh Ekene woman over now. Am I coming out?
Please, uh what is said? Yes, I do more, but is it from you on the background? Yes, um Mauro Barker, um unmute yourself again. So go on.
Okay, am I coming out?
Yes, go on.
Okay, uh special greetings to everyone, uh my APM. Welcome to Aludo State and uh and Ekene went to Aludo for the uh without wasting time, I want to pick the color, on behalf of Omba State, I want to pick the color with five thousand AJ.
Thank you, thank you, God bless you, and God bless Omba State.
Uh I will, I will, I will remove the payment uh through the Omba State administrator.
God bless you.
Thank you very much, you are welcome, you are welcome. So uh please, if anyone have updates, you can ask where come up, please, and then uh represent whoever uh that uh you want to represent or your counties. Counties, please come up.
So, sorry, uh how much, how much?
I have an update. Mazzi Ugogji.
How much?
One hundred, one hundred AJ.
Five thousand.
One hundred AJ, man.
Uh Nama, hold on, hold on, hold on, SN had just the last speaker, how much did he give?
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
The last guy gave five thousand AJ from uh I think Alanso. He gave five thousand, five thousand. Yes. Yes. Like I said, uh Mazzi Ugogji, Honorable Ugogji, updates gave a one hundred AJ, man. I think he has sent the receipt to us, which has been admitted to the national accounts. Thank you from my location at Papua.
Thank you very much. Uh please, counties, refs, personnel, please come and represent your counties. Color not eating, is there on? We've broken the color knot, Nama Kelo will not eat it, or else he will share the blessing alone. So please, everyone here have to join him eating the color knot. Color knots, color knots, color knots. Counties and friends of Aludo, it's time to eat the color knot.
I'll do it, I can blend with music.
Yes, that's it, that's what I want to. So while, while we uh expect others to come and share the color knot with us, we will also listen some of Aludo's made music. That's not what I want, my goodness. Please, if you want to eat cola, don't hesitate to raise your hand, please. Color for eating. We are still in color not eating, one people color not, please. All right, we can move into our next agenda. Aludo has broken the color knot for everyone of us. Color not for eating. Color not is stay free for the eating. Uh please, is the beer coming off?
The words.
Now, okay, what we are seeing is your email, I don't stop her. We are seeing your emails, but words, so you are sharing the run, I can't stop her. So please be careful of what you are sharing, don't show your sensitive information.
I don't even know how it comes about this email on the program was.
Close, close, close the, close the email window. Close every other browser, you know, you're not using for anything. Everything you open and down, you're supposed to close it. Only allow the one you have to make you, so that you don't mistakenly show what you are supposed to show. By the time you can't show us your bank account, we not go take a music with you, we will come out the money off.
Okay, okay, uh uh it's a terrible, yes, yeah. So thank you, it's uh uh if, if only to even got into uh uh behalf friend account, no problem.
Wait, is that the minister comfort, is a comfort, is that you?
Yeah, yes.
No, that's me.
Okay, I'm posting you now. Uh it's a big girl. Is that a big girl confirm, is that you? Deputy Exile Admin, if you want to say it confirm. Uh no, 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 yeah, uh Deputy Italian Rep Confirm, is that you? So that you guys can give a voice to.
Yes, it's me, thank you Mazzi.
Alright. They said my account, my, my account mistakenly entered yours, I mean, you see, I'm sending them back to me, I beg.
Ah, if I see I'm, I will, okay now, I will hold it for you. I'll clear the account.
Yeah, I go clear it.
I'll clear the account and do my own phone, do my phone receipt.
Uh 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 confirm, good evening.
Because it's so busy today.
And there were, yes, I thought as much, it's not easy. So uh behalf France, uh please, we are still in uh cola eating. Uh Aludo has uh presented color not, uh every one of us, we have to eat it. You have to share the color not with them before we invite our honorable APM to come and deliver to us the goodies again. So everyone is open for all. Please, if you want to eat color knot, please come up, come up. Color knots, I'm gonna offer aquilo o sardie.
What was that thing that was amagamated? They have amagamated, they must tell us what they amagamated, what those things were before they amagamated them and why we should not do amagamate. So the company was not organically made, the people didn't come together and say, oh, we just want to be Nigerians. Somebody committed a crime of amagamation. What did you amagamate and why did you amagamate it? They amagamated it because our supply was so poor. It was written there. The reason why we are amagamating is because the Northerners are poor, they have nothing. So that they start having, are we not reading them today?
Yes. What was it that was amagamated that cannot be de-amagamated? That is the question. That is the question we keep asking. When I see this thing, behalf France, if you not see this, you know, either in abundance here. Who know what in this thing be?
No, I don't know.
Who know what in this thing be? Not me, not me, me go drink, I'm now, either, either my, the money here. If we finish eating cola, then this one will come out.
That's okay, show us again, I will watch it well.
Okay, now watch out, that don't be.
When I see this, it, it just, no, no water. No water, no water, no, this is on our original. Well, uh please, uh color knot, uh if you have to eat color knot later, then we see if APM is uh ready now. Uh we invite him, I, we, the color not also, even if he's addressing, nothing stops eating the color knot. So I don't, uh, how do you see it? Aper hour.
It is wanting again.
Uh so uh how do you see it, can we combine both, also inviting APM? Uh and then uh so go, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead with other items, when APM is ready, we will send it.
Okay, okay, let me, let me try this uh this uh let me try this thing once again, I hope it will click now. Oh, I just clicking nonsense. Arrow people, uh yeah, okay, let me, let me put it on before. I'll start in the other. Why working for APM if you want to pick Cola not please don't hesitate to come up If you want to mean what don't hesitate
100% Kontrolle in jedem Detail
Sorry So Honorable Lab go on
Okay Hey They want an people
They want
They want
They want Biafran they want
They want
They want my yoma
I know
I done the way
I want him I will
I lelelu
I know
That's why they complain like K Bishop comfort Because love I care for that I done them They have one of me don't yet So just wanted to come tonight I did much in the And I can come and come
Yes I want to I want
I want to win now I want to win now I want to win now Man man I want a keyboard Eh who want okay for a bottle
Eh no one eh
Eh who want he was a combo man
I got a quiet I got a quiet here
Bottom man with 28 gemma
I like a quiet
They jam on it
My bad guy Do like them mama Akamarama kaiga koro When I love Um woman Simke lende aludo And he has what He tell 50 a gemma Nekelenda aludo siuno jishike
Eh what
I will tell what
Sinde aludo uno jishike So ya bottom 50 a gemma Ya receipt 100 a gemma We go to Maz okay
Oh
I like a quiet I like a quiet Quanaka 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 I want I love the world They want
Emanau kurogwe
Ugebaji aruso Emanuwa ugebaji aruso They want Yes yes yes
Inama you know half a year ago Two way who are kurogwe already say
They are quiet
Before
They are quiet But you can
They are kurogwe But I'm a koa They are too no
Before I call the police
Before I call the police Drive